You confident that we're streaming?
I'm, I can, I can text a few people to check.
Are you, are you public, opposed to confidence?
Actually, I can check.
So you're saying there's a chance?
Do you wanna verify the live stream, the live stream link status? Or call this order?
Is this on the YouTube channel?
It's, it's, yeah, it's working right now, so.
It is.
Well, I'm gonna check the YouTube channel for you.
So we can watch ourselves on YouTube while we have.
Pretty.
You're good.
Well, Andy was supposed to go analog at this meeting, but he.
Uh, he's already got his, he's already going.
We, we, we placed an analog request on Andy, but it didn't work.
Didn't last long.
No.
Yeah. Yeah.
It has a delay.
That's out.
That's in case he starts.
That's standing.
Chris is gonna hit the button stop.
Alright, so ladies and gentlemen, well, yes, it's six oh four. And call a meeting to order, would you please join me for the pledge of co-agents? Pledge of agents to the pride of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every entity in the. Alright guys, uh, pretty quick one here, well, maybe a pretty quick one. To discuss and finalize warrant articles, we've got the final round of numbers from LBA. Outside of that, is there any other agenda items that we want to add, tweak, change, or modify? Now, the only thing I will say is tomorrow night, we do have a public hearing with the NBC. There's a meeting at six, uh, which will be recessed for the public hearing at seven, and then there will be a continuation of the meeting if necessary after the public hearing.
The hearing is at seven?
The, the public hearing is at seven, the NBC meeting is at six, this is the NBC's public hearing. So, if any of the board members are available tomorrow, uh, for the six o'clock meeting as well as the public hearing, tomorrow would be a great night to have as much representation as we can to the board, from six until hopefully the completion of that meeting.
And then at the George B. White, right?
It'll be at the George B. White in the, I believe it'll be in the basement, but it'll be, um, cool, some sort of venue here. Alright, so, uh, we have one last kinda look at the warrant articles here, and some bond figures, and then a little bit of everything else, so why don't we go ahead and get into it? Eddie, you wanna lead the charge?
Sure, so I think the, the only warrant that you didn't vote on to this point was number two, and that was for the recreation center, we didn't have the final figure yet. Um, that final figure did come in, and I put it in your packets, so the estimate or the budget right now as presented is eight million four hundred thirty thousand for the recreation center. Um, we did not fill in the amount for the first, um, payment because we need to know how many years you wanted to bond for before we can fill that number in, so. Um, that's the decision you need to make tonight if you wanna place this on the warrant, and if so, um, what with the bond, the length of the bond. And I think I put the bond schedules in your, um, packet as well, so you can see what the payments would be.
You did, and you did also, you added the first year's bond payment, right, according to one.
Yes.
We can circle back to this.
If you, right, if you wanted it to be something other than that. I think you said, did you choose the term on the, on the first article?
If we took, no, we did, the board did not, I think we talked back and forth, so we'll circle that.
Oh. Yeah. Okay, perfect.
Um, so. I guess ultimately we have to decide what we wanna do with Article Two. What are the thoughts of the board?
And this is simply whether or not to include the community center?
Yes, to allow the adder, or to, to put the adder for the community center on. So we can move it through, we can not move it through and strike the article, it's at the board's discretion at this point.
Is there any reason why we would strike it after the word in the estimate, there we go, that I'm not pretty to?
I think just, this, I think I was shocked at the amount, that was the only thing that I had been thinking about today.
Yeah, certainly a much more, um, costly, I would say, uh, option than I was anticipating. Now, looking at the breakdown, there's, you know, a fair bit of money in there, contingencies and everything else, and there's, you know, a big thing that, you know, this big bit of unknown is, you know, how much of the contingencies do you need to rely on in the grand scheme of things or not? Um, you put them in for the bonds, for the sake of the bond, because you wanna plan for the worst and hope for the best.
Right.
Um, you also don't, we don't have any sense of if or how much state aid we would potentially qualify for or receive, that's obviously a, an ongoing process.
I, and I do have, uh, some information about that, um, when Allentown went for their building aid, they were told that, um, you can't use building aid for anything other than K eight, so they weren't even able to have a preschool portion funded by building aid. So if you did this project, this project would not be eligible if it was, um, a community center.
The Article Two portion.
Correct.
So, and that, but I guess the beauty with that is because it's separated, at least in that case.
That's right.
It's its own.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you know how much, and I'll, you know the actual number that Allentown got?
I, well, I want to say it was nineteen million, sounds.
Okay. So I mean, it's a pretty substantial amount of money.
Just going from that, yeah, they, they qualified for, right, they're free and reduced population is higher than yours, and.
They, they go. That they qualify. It's hard, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, there's certainly, and there's a lot of metrics to that.
Yeah.
So, at the last meeting, we obviously moved the amount for the, the addition and the renovation. So we can put this on the ballot and see if flies, we can, not, but I guess ultimately we can decide a direction and then possibly talk about if, if we're gonna be on the ballot, we need to provide a little bit of direction on what term we wanna go on.
So, I guess I have two thoughts on it. The, first is the work's been done, we know how much it's gonna cost, and it'd be a great addition to both the school and the community. And so, in that sense, I would say let's get down the warrant article and try and get it passed. On the other hand, we know that we're asking for an enormous amount of money, uh, with the renovations and the additions along. Does it come off as, are we sending the wrong message by asking for too much is the concern that I have? And that, you know, we're not, that we're, we're not aware of how much we're asking for, which obviously, we all are very much aware of how much we're asking for. But is that the, the message that's gonna be communicated, and that's what I've been thinking about and trying to reconcile? The benefit and the fact that we're already this far, and now it's, an, a, a, an ask, right, that's easy to make. It's not a simple ask, but it's an ask that is easy to ask, because we have all the information prepared. Versus the message that it sends, whether, even though it's not what we're, we're directly saying, it, it is, if I'm somebody that hasn't been aware of the process, hasn't been aware, you know, all the, all the backwork that went into it, does it just come across as they're just asking, need a tax burden to write a blank check? If it was two million, sure, that seems like much more reasonable ask. So I'm, I'm still on the fence of it, on it, and really curious, I guess, what the other board members have to say.
Um, I have similar, similar reservations, uh, about it. I think you said it well, that, that it's easy to ask that, but I feel like that does start to send a very deaf, you know, message that we're not really in touch with our community, that it seems like a lot of money for our community right now. So yeah, I agree with that.
I would say we certainly have the ability to, if, if we weren't to place Article Two on the ballot, and Article One was to pass, and the engineering work, we can certainly, I'm sure, absorb the, a, some additional engineering to allow us to have a better idea of what we'll take in the future, and possibly even do a little bit of layout, so that in the event that if something was wanted to be added down the road, you're not undoing things. I think if you, if you design knowing that there's a potential for that, you may, you may find yourself in a situation where you're not undoing the things you've already done down the road, so I mean, that would certainly be, I think, a, a direction I'd wanna pursue, is to at least try to design everything around that potential on the road.
You mean future tying into the fire alarm system, tying into sprinkler, tying into?
Yeah, so when you renovate, you renovate, or you didn't see the trunk line over to a floor, you needed the trunk line over to your, you, you know, you add electrical capacity so that you can service that at the same time. The small things that kinda help facilitate an outfit.
So, are you saying that the systems that we're putting in now potentially wouldn't be able to support?
I'm saying if, if, if you, if we're renovating this building, and we know that ten years down the road, there's a potential that you were to add a community center.
Something over there.
Over there. When you're doing the design and the engineering for the renovation of this building, you design and you engineer it for the intent of down the road, and you put something over there.
I agree with that.
You know, you're not, it's no different than burying a header on a wall.
Yeah.
In, in, in your house.
Yeah.
Because you say, okay, someday I'm gonna add on, I'm gonna go that way, it's burying the header in the wall.
It's gonna leave a box or a panel over there for.
Whatever it may be, and that's the engineer's end of it to figure out, but you at least, you plan and allow for accordingly.
Yeah, yeah.
GG is, is going east and west?
Yeah. Yeah.
Or just really, really, so far east, you just go back around west?
No, I, I'm just trying to, uh, I just feel like we're, we're in such a, uh, I think, um, uh, a challenging spot in kind of like, as a town. Um, because, uh, like historically, when I think about, at least the mentality, not necessarily of, of the board per se, but I, I think through the board, from the, the school, um, we, we spent a lot of time just like being afraid to ask for things. It was, we were in the suck it up mentality, and then one of the biggest reasons for that was because we recognized that what we needed to do, the priority then, was to make sure that we had teacher salaries that were in line with, with the, with the state, with the rest of the state, and that we weren't losing teachers to other, other places. Um, so, so we've kind of worked and worked on that, that, that was kind of like the, the focus for a while, and which is where our asks were coming from. And, and while we were doing that, we were shoving people into closets, and we were having professional development in stairwells, and we were, because that was a, that stuff was the mindset. And I, I think the same thing with the rec department as well, like, it, in the, in the rec department, it's, it, you know, we, we kind of started out like just having a couple little, see, back when my kids were little, and then, you know, the rec department blossomed, but it was kind of that, okay, well, let's get the personnel in place and get, and then we started worrying about, and people want more and more places and spaces and things for the community to do, which is excellent, but we're just like in this weird growing pain spot. And it, it's so, it, it is hard, the, the, the building ask is hard, but we, but we're, we're trying to like, look to the future on that. Um, the rec department, you know, could really, the whole community could benefit from a space. Um.
The.
Go ahead.
I think that ties into the bigger factor of, for so long, this town hasn't invested in itself, right? I mean, the last investment this town made in itself was really when we put up this building.
This building.
Which was, you know, thirty years ago. And this building has done a great job, but we have outgrown this space, and this town has outgrown the space at Parks and Recs, and it's outgrown the police stations, it's outgrown the firehouses. And so, you know, I look at this, I look at all of this, and I go, it's an investment in the community, it's an investment in the future, and an investment that will pay dividends in the long run, but you have to look at this as an investment, and, and you can't look at it as, as a tax burden, it's an investment. It's an investment in the community, it's an investment in, in, in this town, and if you don't, it's going to slowly kill the town because it, it can't grow, and it won't be able to prosper, and we won't be able to expand and benefit from it. I'm not opposed to running the article with the rec center, but I would certainly wanna spend a considerable amount of time trying to work that number down after the fact if we did. And that's the thing, we're, the number on the bond isn't necessarily the amount of, the amount of money we need. That, that's, that's, that's our worst-case scenario number. Just like with the school's budget, we can then spend the rest of our time trying not to spend the money. Same thing with the, the, the addition project here, right? It's, this is, this is our maximum number, just like our budget. Now, like Trish does all year long, let's try not to spend the money as, as much as we can. We need to do what we need to do, but let's, let's try to be as efficient and effective with it as we can. So, I'm all for this community investing in itself, I'm for investing in new police stations, and I understand I'm, I'm making these statements with my wallet, but I'm, I'm, I'm for investing in schools, in community centers, in police stations, in fire stations, and updating and upgrading the things that this town needs to really prosper for the next twenty or thirty years. And maybe I'm alone in that sentiment, I don't know, but I see it as an investment, I see it as an investment that's gonna pay dividends in the long run.
I think part of it for me is the, is the cloudiness, um, I don't, I sort of asked last meeting, um, and I still am, you know, I'm not having been on, involved in a lot of this work, I don't know exactly, when you say community center, I heard that we're talking about a gym, I sort of heard some, heard some sort of, you know, very loose parameters, but I, I'm not even convinced what's, what's going into this, and how much flexibility is there, and if it's a community center, then to what extent is the community using it or running it, and to what extent is the school using it? And if the school's gonna be using it, then it's not so much a community center, and, I mean, it is, but it's part of our budget, and it's not the community's, like, town budget, so there's so much to me, confusion and gray about this, um, that I would certainly, over the next couple of months, we would, if we go ahead with this, we have our work cut out for us to make this clear to the voters. I'm on the board, and I'm gonna clear about it, then, you know, we have limited time to, to make this clear to the voters. Um, and clearly, that's part of our job, but I think it, to me, answering some of these questions about, yeah, I agree that the community needs these things, but, but is the school, you know, I, I don't know, there's so much that's unknown that I have a hard time wrapping my head around it right now, and especially for eight and a half million, you know, I think for two million, that could sort of wrap it around a little bit easier, and recognize that there's room to figure that out, but this is a big ask for some uncertainty. So, so what do we wanna do?
Motion's entitled.
I, I guess the only thing is, you know, is this ask, if we put warrant Article Two on, is it going to harm us in getting warrant Article One, which we desperately need? Warrant Article Two, in my opinion, is a one, warrant Article One is a need.
Yes.
And if we can conflate the two, you know, involve the two, does it harm us in getting warrant Article One passed? Or conversely, just putting warrant Article Two on the ballot, help us in any way, but let's say it's neutral and harming us, right? Then the question is, does it help us getting warrant Article One passed? And if it doesn't, then I would say, you know, it's, it's a nice thing we're trying to do for the community, but is it a, a step too far? And, you know, it doesn't go with our original mission of improving and getting this building to where it needs to be, I mean, walking around the building tonight, it's like, wow, it's showing its age, we've, you know, it, it's it's drastic, so.
It's thirty years of five hundred kids running through it. Right, it's done a great job, but.
So, I guess we're gonna discuss it anyway, so I'll make a motion to include, uh, warrant Article Two, and will be put forward.
Okay, so we have a motion to include Article Two, that is written, I guess the best way to put it?
What you said.
Okay. Can I second all that?
I'll second it.
Seconding by Jeff.
So, um, I guess in the, to continue the conversation really, so, um, I think the subcommittee and the board had sticker shock when we saw the price for the expansion and the renovation. Um, and so when I look at the sticker shock for, you know, the community center, or whatever we're gonna call it, whatever the space is gonna be used for, there's sticker shock, right? But again, there was sticker shock with the expansion, so I look at them as kind of one and the same. Um, so I try to take that out of, you know, my decision. Um, and then another point is, uh, so we, I think one of the, one of the ideas or things that we hear about is that like either we're not in touch with the community, or the community doesn't know, you know, what we've been up to, what we're working on, and you know, that sort of stuff, so I know that, you know, messaging and, and costs are gonna be something that we have to really like, refine our message, and everyone has to use the same message to talk about uh, the expansion and the potential community center, that way we're all saying the same thing, that way everybody doesn't hear, you know, mixed messages. Um, but, um, you know, folks wanna know what's going on with the high school contracts and the school expansion, and so I thought, again, I thought we would be doing a disservice to the community by not sharing the costs. Um, and then GG, you said that, you know, we worked a while ago to get, um, you know, uh, staff administration compensation in alignment with like standards or normals. And so, I look at the school project that we're working on, the expansion in the educational space, to get us in compliance with, um, uh, classroom standards, you know, number of kids in a room, you know, so on and so forth, and then the community center to really support the mission of the school, which is to be, you know, a community-based school, and if we don't have anywhere in the community where folks can get together, um, you know, other than the ball fields around town, or the, you know, the George B. White, I mean, I think using the school as a space to, to do that, I, I think it's a great project and a mission, I mean, obviously the costs are, you know, high, but like you said, it's an investment for the next thirty years, hopefully longer. Um, we're, we're making an investment out back with, you know, outdoor classrooms, and so it's like, I just think, you know, even if, um, you know, the, the citizens vote against Two, they'll at least have a sense of, you know, potentially the costs that they're looking at in the future, if they agree that the school needs to be a focal point for the community. Um, and, you know, hopefully along with our messaging, they'll know the work that's gone into it, you know, what the rec department's thinking of using it for, and how we collaborate with the school and stuff, so. I mean, I, I basically don't wanna be in a position where we're, you know, putting it on next year and the year after, but I think at least getting it out there and trying to talk the talk and educate people is the way to go.
Can we amend it? So, are, are these two articles amenable at?
We have to get advice from bond counsel, but I believe the answer is yes.
By, by the public body?
Yes.
So, we can, we can place it on, we can have our public hearing, we can work to really refine that number, and we can amend it at deliberative if we decide to go down there.
I'm waiting on the final word, but that is my standing to this point, I would wanna verify, just to be sure.
I mean, that's a pretty good point, if everybody is at the deliberative session with pitchforks, and they're saying no deal, then I think it sounds like.
It'd also potentially kill it.
Exactly, is it also possible that at the deliberative, if the community is like, oh, no, you know, four, four no? Do we then take that and then go back to the LBA, is that how that works?
And if, if it was amended, and, and at that point, you would have to decide if you can move forward with the project.
Okay.
The answer may be no.
Oh, I like that ideal letter, Zach, um, that would give us a month to, to, to refine it into a little bit more focus.
Right.
Uh, like I said last meeting, to talk to the rec department, to talk to the community, I mean, it's kind of like, sure, if you build it, they will come, but I don't know that to what extent can we, to what extent are we doing this thing, which is not, how, which, which has had very little agency on the community's part? We are trying to plan this thing for the community, and we don't know what the, the community wants, and I, I don't know to what extent that work has been done. I know we've talked to the rec, and that's a key part of it, but but I feel like if we're gonna actually call this a community center, and we're gonna have buy-in and agency from the community, then there's more work to be done, and, and I wonder whether actually holding off this year, and maybe I, I would be really pick about this, I think about the deliberative session, but, I don't know, maybe we need to hold off for a year, work on the school, on the big, on the big one, and then spend a year, you know, talking to the, you know, in, in more detail, talking to and planning with, and collaborating with community members as part of the planning process, so that this becomes a community center with some more design agency from the community, and the school of building it for the community and hoping that'll be used.
I, I think that the challenge with that is that the community, in trying to reach out and, and engage, we might get one or two people that are super excited, and we might find them out there. But until, I, I think what I've seen in the two years I've been on the board is that the community doesn't engage. They must, you know, they're randomly opposed to something, but when people are in op support of it, it's kind of just, uh, crickets. So I think that, in theory, it's a great idea, but I think the reality of what we've seen is, you know, we have to drive it if we wanna get anything done. No one in the community is gonna take up the mantle, and, and we're not gonna get fifty people, we're not gonna get twenty people, I highly doubt we'd get ten people that are involved. I, I think it's, has to be driven by us, certainly by the rec department. And I think that those questions, so, to, the, the questions on the rec department, I, I share your concerns, we need to get collaboration with them. To really refine exactly what the parameters are, but we know that those parameters are gonna exist, it's just a question of what they look like. They're gonna use it to some extent, it's just a question of what.
They'll use it, I mean, considerably.
Yep, going back to the deliberative session concept, I'm not sure exactly where you're going with it, but between now and then, to try and get this eight million down to a number that we're comfortable with, I don't know what capacity we have at this point. To go back to, you know, we got square footage is the square footage as far as LBA is concerned.
Right.
And with BPS, to go back and say sharpen your pencil and get this down to six?
Or is it a sharpen your pencil, or maybe it's a, it's a conversation with OVA and say, how do we value engineer this to get the cost down? And maybe it's a different type of structure, maybe that's slightly different, maybe it's.
I think that.
It's a cypress wall with a little bit of glass in it.
Sure, I think that's.
And a cross roof.
I think that's a level of granularity that we're not at yet, and it says, I wouldn't put a whole lot of weight or faith in between now and deliberative session having those types of answers that we'd be comfortable whittling anything, that I wouldn't be comfortable until the warrant article passes, and we've begun full design docs, really working on trying to hash out those.
Fully, fully engineer the, value engineer.
Yeah.
I did get a response, just when I was checking for, because I thought it would be helpful.
Okay.
Um, so from bond counsel, she says, you are correct that at the bond hearing and/or the deliberative session, that the amounts can be changed, but not the purpose of the articles. I assume an amendment would be made to reduce the amount, but if for some reason someone is suggesting an increase, that could be prob, that was significantly higher, that could be problematic.
An increase.
So it says bond hearing or the deliberative session, so you have bond hearing on the eighteen.
So at the bond hearing, if it's a public hearing, the public can't necessarily weigh in, either board members could, would, would amend it from the.
That doesn't give you much time either, a week, you know, it would probably, but, but now at least you know it deliberative.
No, and now. It could be amended.
Mm-hmm.
Or it could be structured, or no, you can't strike it, I guess deliberatively, you could, you could change the wording to say, should we pursue it?
So they can, they can decrease it without a problem, they can increase if it's problematic?
Yes. You have to note, you have to notice an approximate amount of the bond, so then you win and increased it.
Oh, because of.
Um, and I, I suspect that the ten percent rule may apply to the bond as well. If you're gonna make an adjustment, it has to be within ten percent. If you're gonna make an adjustment, it has to be within ten percent.
Up or down or just up?
Both, no, up.
Or down?
Up.
Okay. All right. So what do we wanna do with this? Do we wanna let it, the motion is to, um, approve as written? Or second it? Do we have any additional discussion?
I think before you approve it though, you'd want the correct interest payment in there. So if you're going to approve it, you probably wanna have the same.
All right.
Cause you said approve it as written and it's written with a blank.
Right, I see what you mean. So we wanna approve.
Where's the bond payment calculations? Can I give you the term?
It's the little, I thought I, I thought I, I only printed the forty-five, but in the, in your packet there is, it's
It's a little stack.
So I would make amendment to the motion, I think really that would go with the thirty-year on the rec center. Bond on the rec center, um, which results in the logic behind that being it's a lower payment each year for the taxpayers. Um, most taxpayers probably looking at things as though they're not gonna be, you know, staying in their house, you know, it's a lot more likely I'll be, you know, out of my house in twenty years and thirty years, so when I look at my R O I, I would prefer that thirty-year term.
Uh, second. Can you use that now?
Did you get that tricked, Zach?
Second, Zach.
Yeah.
So we have the bond max numbers on eight point four.
Mm-hmm.
On a twenty.
I have that one for myself.
I know where you want it.
Do you have it on that?
That's
You have it on a twenty-five. And that's the good one.
I don't have thirty for eight point four, but
I was thinking of twenty and twenty-five.
I might, yeah, I mean, cause it wasn't a thirty for that, might not hold it.
The dollar may not have been nine hundred thirty, but So, so we have an amendment for thirty and Jeff, I would ask you to amend it to twenty-five.
Sure. It was a twenty-five-year bond rate.
So the first-year payment on the twenty-five-year bond.
That's just the interest payment.
Three, two, ten. Two hundred and ten. On a twenty-five-year bond. So we populate that if that was a future that kind of I mean, think about it that way. It's like nothing's a lot better. I mean, come on now.
Um, I don't know, this is better for the amendment discussion or can we back up there?
So right now we are, we're on the amendment, but whatever, we're we're basically on the whole top.
I'll, I'll amend it. So my question is, when will we, if if we stagger them by a year and just plan on trying to cut some here? I hear your mind that how much of the community would actually get involved, but, um, but but maybe part of that year is spent looking more, if if the article one passes, can we look at I know that, I know a lot of detail we're gonna look at on the building as we're actually getting into it. Um, would there be a way of incorporating some community piece into that current plan? Like some of that can still be adjusted to some extent and maybe that would be a way of, as we get in planning, it could be still there some tweaks that could could lead to that. If not, over the course of that year, and let's say we make an argument to try to put that on the next year's, um, warrant, go at the community center, would we over the course of next year, hear from the building? When do you think we will hear from building, like whether we, from the state, whether we get building here or not?
So you can't apply it till July?
Your application is due in July and will be in the second year of the biannual budget. Um, but the issue with that is the budget dragged on and on and on last year and and the building aid was on the chopping block until the very last second. So you don't even know that the budget, the state budget is approved on time. We started school years with no state budget, unfortunately.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, so
Well, if we got that, I know we couldn't use it for the community center, but we could make that as a case to
Well, this reduces the cost of of project A, which then
Which perhaps brings up money, not exactly, but maybe then we make our our case a little more convincing to spend that money on the community center or voters or
But at at the flip side, it's it's kind of like a surplus in the budget. The money just goes, the money you don't spend, it's just the money you don't spend. Whether you don't spend it out of this party, you don't spend it out of that party, it's finished. Right? So I think what you're saying is, well, we realize savings over here, can we, can we include it in project A?
No, I didn't say to actually change the project A, but that's not bad. Could we actually change project A if we get funding from the state? Could we actually, I don't know, that's not I meant, I meant if we, if we knew we were getting state aid, could we then convince the voters to then go for the the project B on the bond here? Knowing that we have state aid.
I I think, I don't know that I wanna go swimming for bonds perpetually.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think my mentality is, is if we're gonna go after bonds, let's go after the bonds, let's try to do it all once. Cause they may, they may or may not pass regardless, right? A to B. If they don't pass, we're gonna be doing this all over again next year anyway. Or at least I would propose to, we do it all over again next year anyway. We still need the addition. It's not like it's gonna go away for five years because we didn't pass the bond.
Right.
Um, so I'm certainly torn. I mean, in my head, um, I feel like it doesn't hurt, but there's gonna be people that are gonna be upset with it no matter what. And I think ultimately what happened over the last couple of years is, is certainly there's, there's no conceivable way to keep everybody happy, so.
If I could also, do you have anything?
I I'll say something, but you go right here.
I was just gonna say, I mean, whether or not we put up the expansion in the community center, the, I think the the town's putting up a police station. You know, so, you know, if you wanted to think about different scenarios, they could, the community, when I say they, could reject the community center, pass the school expansion, pass the police station, and then next year we go to do just the community center. And then the taxpayer is like, no way, I'm all set.
Having seen their new taxes.
Wh- whether it's us putting for the community center or whether the rec department proposes their own thing, so.
I mean, the, the, the impact some investment in this community will have on the overall financial health of this community is huge. The investment, if you only see your tax bill in this, you are incredibly short-sighted. Because the investment in the community will net out in the long run. And it's an instant investment in 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 your own property. And that is, in America, where large, you know, holding an individual wealth is in real estate. And it has a, it will net returns for everybody in the community. Nobody's housing value will be diminished because this community made an investment in education and in police and in fire and in the community. Those are the things that drive housing values up for a generation or two. So I mean, it 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 truly is an investment outside of anything else. It's an, it it is, certainly there's an investment to be made in the community, in yourself, but you have to look at it through that lens.
And if we add it now and at the deliberative session, we can change it, and that would be sort of the first taste of how the community feels about it.
Yeah.
It'll be the week after the town, and if the town's putting up a police station
The town is really, I think theirs is for the design, they're they're kind of running the police station almost a year behind, so I think theirs is for the design work on the police station.
So there probably would be some room, uh, about whether putting in this community center is going to actually sink the police station next year.
So next year
And maybe the deliberative session will choose to take it out.
I think So, and I would certainly see the struggle I have when we, I don't wanna be competing with the town or anything, but I will also say the town puts a police station up or a fire station up, and then it doesn't pass, so they take it away for five years. And then they put it back up, they take it away for five years. We desperately need a new police station. We really need a new fire station, but you can't ask for it and then I need it for five years. Because you you are, you're indicating that it wasn't a necessity. It is a necessity. It needs to be on the ballot till it passes realistically. Because that's, if it's a need, it's a need, and you can't let it disappear for five years. We need a, we need, we need a bigger facility here. It's gonna be on the ballot. If it doesn't pass, it needs to be on the ballot again and again and again. But it's, it's an absolute necessity.
Well, I think G D U will respond to that.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so I I I have, um, some of the same kind of like West or granular detail concerns as Nate does in terms of the rec department, in terms of what their needs are and those, uh, you know, what their, what their, uh, programmatically, uh, will that space cre- create what they need. Um, uh, yet on the other hand, I lean towards, uh, probably because the work's been done and including, um, everything in this particular, this year, putting both on. Uh, because I I feel like you you, um, have to start with, uh, this, you know, a vision. And then, as you said, Zach, it, you ha, and you have to keep working at it. If if the, we can't proliferate the, you know, the story this year, then we need to get a be- a better, more compelling and continue to pro- proliferate that's, that story. Um, so I I think it's probably important, um, to put I I would probably lean towards putting them both on, just, just, you know, as the term that you've used before, rip the Band-Aid off and and go for it.
Very well. So
Um, and and then, and then really just make sure that we have good robust explanations as to like we are not trying to be cavalier about people's, uh, tax bills. We're not trying to force fixed income people out of the town. We're not trying to do those things. But we're trying to walk this line of this weird growth place that we're in that, like you said, we haven't done that. We haven't invested, we haven't looked at the growth and the way education has changed and 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 then brought a building up to that standard. We haven't, we haven't done that for a really long time. Since the models have been sitting there.
Thirty years. Yeah.
So, uh, we we just have to, I think, make our intentions crystal clear that n- no one on this board is taking, um, you know, those things for granted. That the 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 financial ask that we're laying out, we're not taking that for granted. It is big, but it it represents not just now and not just five years from now. It represents a forward-thinking vision that should put the town, as you said, in a very good place. And in the long run, elevate the worth of, of
It it'll pay dividends in the long run, but you would have to, if you're not, you you have to be willing to look at it from that perspective. And I don't know that everybody is willing to look at it from that perspective.
Yeah. I agree.
I certainly am more than comfortable to look at everything from that perspective, but why don't we address the motion if there's no other discussion? And so the motion is to use the twenty-five-year bond figures. Any additional discussion? Alvin favorite?
Aye.
All right. So now the current, uh, motion would be to approve Article Two as written with the addition of the twenty-five-year bond figures. Did I capture that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's where we're at there. So the question is, do we have any additional discussion on the primary motion or do we want to act on? Seeing none, I'll look for a vote to approve Article Two as written with the amendment pre- uh, previously made. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fire in the hole. All right. So that brings us to a brief discussion on Article One, which is the terms for that particular bond.
If you notice, um, if you're having trouble working through this, as I did first time, um, you can look at the top above the da- dashes, it says our twenty-year interest and then our twenty-nine-year interest, so you know which one you're looking at. And the the larger amount is on line one, you can see where it says forty-five point five. So the first payment on both of these is the same, it's the interest payment. So no matter which option you choose, the first payment that would be on the article would be one million, one thirty-seven-five. Um, and but then you would look to the total payment for the second payment and you would see where you were headed on in subsequent years.
And again, they're using a, they're estimating twenty-year note at, I, at a
Two point five.
Two point five, however, in July, it was one point seven four for the rec bond sale. And they're estimating three percent on the thirty, it was one point ninety-four. So they are estimating slightly higher than the more recently seen figures, which is good. Thoughts on, and again, there is no prepaid on penalties on that. So if if you are able to, A, not draw it down as much or direct surplus in the bond, or something along those lines, you can accelerate it. Which is, I think, when we did this voting, you know, we paid the bond offer, but you weren't here.
Been here a long time, but not thirty.
I thought we had to check.
I would
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall.
Make a motion that we, uh, adopt thirty-year bond schedule. Again, looking to the yearly burden to families, reducing that, even though we'd end up paying more in interest over the long term if we paid, played out the entire life of the bond. I think that, you know, households in Deerfield, while there are many people who have lived here for a long time, it's a pretty transitory community on the same hand, and I think that, you know, looking at that yearly burden to families going for thirty-year bond is gonna make that a more bearable.
So Jeff, just motions to amend the numbers to the thirty-year figure.
Aye.
One, seconded by Nate. Additional discussion, that would make, so the actual language of the article would not change, other than
Correct. Other than the thirty-year bond.
Other than, other than thirty-year
Yes.
Okay. So, but as far as that first year's payment
Or is the term, is the term in here?
I don't think it's
I don't think so.
That's right. I don't think it is.
Is that
Yeah, it's just like
Does that allow us, that may allow us to move to
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So in that case, it's really relevant. All right.
Cool.
Good work, Jeff.
Thanks.
Appreciate the help.
Yeah, just occurred to me, we were talking about that, that's, that's
So. Any other changes, tweaks or amendments to the rest of the articles? Everything else is cleaned up as discussed at the last meeting.
Just to go back to number two?
Sure.
I don't think there's, uh, bond language in there either about the duration.
No, it would, it would just be a throughout years
No.
It's
Yeah, it's, 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 uh, it's authorizing the school board to t- to determine the rate of interest and the maturity and other term, terms thereof.
Oh, Andy's correct though. The first year's payment would be the same in either scenario, to attempt that.
Yes, correct, of both.
So
So we'll, we'll plug that in.
Cool.
All right.
So that's better.
It's even better. So then we can
Right, does not then go into the operating, close operating budget?
No.
Not right now?
Not right now.
What we're putting in, if you see, in the payback class, um,
Right.
No, it's well
It's a separate.
It would be, it would be a a debt service line and, uh, or a bond service line.
But it would get added, you know, if we get a default budget, but they're two separate things. It's not gonna necessarily affect operating budget.
This would not, this would
It's a question
It's independent.
But once it's voted on, you have to make your payment.
Once it's voted on, we're arranging the funds, you make the payment.
Yes, yes. Well, if that, if we can defund that motion.
All right.
But the
So I think maybe we have to, that's a good logistical question.
Correct, correct.
Because we made a motion and we had a second, we have to like take that off the table?
I don't
Yeah, I think we should take that off the table.
Just look at
Uh, we'll leave it at that.
We'll
Second. We can We've drawn.
Drawn.
It's drawn, no, it's drawn.
Okay.
Thank you for the nice communication.
Thank you.
Gee, alright. Any other items?
Uh, just a clarification on the meeting schedule. So, our next meeting.
So if you were to analyze right now, it'd all be in your head.
Well.
And you'd be golden.
I'm just making it count, right? So on the agenda, the next meeting is the nineteenth, um.
It's the eighteenth. No, the bond hearing's the eighteenth.
Bond hearing's the eighteenth. I was actually, I meant to ask, should should we schedule the nineteenth meeting on the eighteenth after the bond hearing, is there a reason not have hold that meeting then and just do the whole smash on Tuesday night?
Um, I will be here that night.
Well, is there anything in there you're worried about, is running behind costs?
I think yes, I think the last night all.
Oh, wait, go on, just answer.
Do you have an adult at the SAU office, you guys are.
Amber, Amber is coming to the bond hearing because when you scheduled that, I already had a a meeting in temporary.
So.
Um, so if you wanna change your board meeting to that evening, I, I mean, we haven't put the agenda together yet, I don't know where we'll be on it.
That was uh, something I meant to discuss, so it's a great opportunity, do we want to hold our board meeting immediately following the bond meeting? At the next meeting.
What time's the bond hearing's third?
At six o'clock.
It's around like six.
And this will be a standard meeting for us?
Yes, but I, do we have anything heavy? There's nothing heavy yet.
Right.
We've dealt with the heavy, we, the budget's been submitted and we're through the budget, so.
Yeah, I don't think. There's nothing I can think of that is.
Might be able to keep one meeting late.
Your bu- your budget's done, you've had the mask discussion.
The heavy done.
Those are the, those are the big.
So we could do that, and then that would allow Patty to maybe even have one evening off this winter.
Don't say that out loud.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's kinda like, well, let's not come look.
Don't say it, don't say it, cause now you just opened a slot for me to fill, that's what happened.
Yeah, so, uh, what's the wish of the board, do you guys wanna do that and schedule, so it's one meeting that week, just that Tuesday of the uh, eighteenth. That's fine with me.
Yep.
Eighth.
Perfect.
Yes?
Sure.
Sure. Question I have on the bond here is, uh, Allenstown, Allentown was pretty thorough.
Yes.
Um I don't know how heavily attended ours is going to be.
It needs, and and that was, did we share those minutes with you, Trish, with from the Allentown bond hearing?
No.
I have those, Amber gave them to me because they were a good example of all of the information that should be in there, so that when we submit it's clear what we talked about at the bond hearing, so you, I'm assuming it would be you, would want to have a summary ready for that bond hearing.
That's like a.
Is, or i- is um, LBA coming to the bond hearing? I think they're coming, yes.
I believe so.
Recurring to, yeah. Uh, we're gonna ask them.
So just a, you know.
A narrative of how we started and we got here.
Right. What the work we've done, where we're at, these are the numbers, and I'm sure they've done these before.
We have a, I think it's the uh, meeting number ten at um, on Wednesday.
You wanna see, we can move, if if the eleven committee can move that to Tuesdays, well just trying to not have a legal multiple, multiple meetings.
Yeah.
No.
I mean, if they were coming to the
Bond hearing.
bond hearing, there's a chance they might be able to
They could just marathon through like they did at the last.
Right.
Yeah.
Come early and we could do our number ten.
Marathon your way through, would that allow you to get to where you have to be?
There might, there might not be a time work at that number ten meeting anyway.
Right.
Would that.
So we could have, yeah, I think that might work.
Would you, would that schedule, would you be, though you to be in multiple places, you need to be at you, I don't know where you'd have to be that uh, Tuesday night.
I have the Pemper School Board.
And are they at six?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, so if you left here by five forty-five.
I can probably remote in as well.
Oh.
Use this, so length will be easier, then I wouldn't have to worry about the travel time, I would just.
So then you're kind of in Deerfield, but you're really, you're you're in memory at the same time.
That's, that's how my brain is every day.
Alright, so from my end of it, for from my scheduling standpoint, uh, is the wish of the board to schedule the school board meeting to follow the bond hearing?
Yes.
Is that the sense of the board?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll schedule the school board meeting to follow the bond hearing, and then Jeff, if you can schedule LBA number ten for Tuesday, and that works for everybody, great. If it's Wednesday, uh, that's not mine to worry about.
Yeah, only really at this point are gonna have, with LBA's working on community outreach effort, and so.
Okay. We've done the. I hope it's done.
Uh, last agenda question that I have, is there a meeting on the twelfth for the uh, NBC?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes.
Yeah, twelfth.
Yeah, so again, six o'clock is the NBC meeting, the board can be available for that, OBA is gonna be there, it's gonna be focused on them discussing our warrant articles.
Perfect.
And then um, seven o'clock, the board, that meeting will, the NBC will adjourn at seven for the public hearing on the town and the school budgets, and then we'll uh, typically proceed after the public hearing to reaffirm their recommendations, typically to uh, put up a ballot, and then will Amber have the MS twenty-sevens?
I don't know, she'll she might be able to now that you've taken your final votes on the corner.
So.
I'm not sure how quickly she can put those together.
She has them, I know, some years she's had, we'll be able to all sign in there, it's a lot easier for the corner
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
the NBC members and just try to knock out a lot of ones.
I'll gather your numbers and hopefully.
So if if the board members are available tomorrow night, certainly is uh, appreciated to have everyone there to participate if necessary.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone. It was uh, not too good.